Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors for November fifteenth. Before we met, before the start of this meeting, we met and interviewed various persons for our boards and commissions vacancies. We also had a discussion regarding our PBA contract and executive session. Before we start a regular meeting here, we have three presentations. They're video presentations, so they're not very long, but they're very entertaining. The first from the zoning hearing board, and you can imagine how entertaining that one's going to be. All right, let's queue them up there. These videos are prepared and presented by our telecommunications advisory board. That's William Lehrer.
As being an engineer, he gives a lot of in on what. Hello, Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, informing you of what the board, the zoning hearing board, has done this past year. First thing I'd like to do is thank you for reappointing Sam Castanza on the board. Being an engineer, he gives a lot of insight on the hearings, especially when we have applicants who are not represented either by an attorney or by an engineer. So I want to thank you for doing the reappointment of Sam. As you know, the board is a quasi judicial board, so I'm not going to go into all the details of the hearings that we had. I'm just going to give you a summary of what took place this past year. We did have thirteen applications. Of the thirteen hearings, five were denied. We also, of the hearings that we had, three hearings went under appeal. The three hearings that were under appeal was Vertigo Bridge, Weeder, Atlas Mountain. Atlas Mountain appealed our original denial, but then they decided to come back and file a new application, which we are presently hearing, and that was continued until May. On the Weeder appeal, we won the appeal. It was affirmed by Bucks County Common Pleas Judge Frisch. So that was, that appeal was in our favor. The interesting hearing that we've had, and this thing started back in June of twenty, was the monster tree service. And that was originally, they appealed the township enforcement. They appealed it. We heard the hearing. We denied their appeal. They also asked for a special exception, and we denied a special exception. Again, that hearing started in June of twenty and ended in January of twenty-two. It was a long hearing, interesting hearing. I think the residents of the township, Board of Supervisors, I think we all benefited from that hearing. It was an interesting one, and again, we all enjoyed it. We'd like to thank you for your support. We take this board as a very serious board, and I appreciate your time. If you have any questions of any of the hearings, feel free to always contact us, but we do appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Next is the Pension Advisory Committee, another barn burner, but they work really hard and they do good work, so we're very appreciative of them.
Hello, my name is Ed Denton, and I am chairman of the Doylestown Township Pension Advisory Committee. The Pension Advisory Committee is comprised of five township residents who have experience working with pension plans, two employee representatives, the township manager, finance director, and a member of the Board of Supervisors. As of the end of December two thousand twenty-one, the pension portfolio totaled twenty-eight-point-six million dollars. As a point of reference, that is over ten million dollars higher than when the PAC was formed four years ago in June two thousand eighteen. Two thousand twenty-one was another productive year for the Pension Advisory Committee. We worked with the township to issue an RFP for Investment Advisory Services. We interviewed and scored each of the fourteen RFP responses, and we interviewed the four top candidates and drafted an assessment of the two top candidates for the Board of Supervisors. The PAC believes that the new advisor will provide as good or better investment performance versus a previous advisor. And we estimate that by utilizing the new advisor, the pension fund will save over nine-hundred-thousand dollars over the next ten years in fees. In addition, two thousand twenty-one, the PAC met with, semi-annually with Deb Brady to review the pension portfolio's performance. And finally, we developed a recommendation for the pension plan contribution amounts for the two thousand twenty-two budget and five-year plan. The PAC recently drafted our two thousand twenty-two objectives. This past March, we completed a minor update to the township's investment policy statement so that it better aligns with how Vanguard will be managing the pension portfolios moving forward. We will be holding our first portfolio review with Vanguard in August to go over the investment performance for the first six months of two thousand twenty-two. Third, the PAC will continue to support the township's budget and five-year planning process, and later this year, we will plan to meet with the township's actuary, Tom Kennedy, and Vanguard to get a better understanding of the pension plan's financial statements. Hopefully, with this increased understanding, we'll be able to identify additional cost savings and revenue opportunities for the township's pension plans, as well as identify continuing education topics for the Board of Supervisors, PAC, and township employees. Finally, the PAC will be working with the township management on a top-level review of the township's defined contribution pension plan. The appendix of this presentation contains a more detailed description of the PAC's two thousand twenty-two objectives. Finally, if any member of the Board of Supervisors has any questions or concerns regarding the pension plans, please do not hesitate to contact us. Thank you and have a nice rest of your day.
And last is our Ways and Means.
I have the distinct honor and pleasure of serving as the chair of the Ways and Means Committee for the Doylestown Township. The Ways and Means Committee was founded or initialized back in two thousand seven by a resolution of the Board of Supervisors for the purpose of providing recommendations to the board related to township finances, investments, budgeting, and long-term planning. What did we do in two thousand twenty-one? Well, we worked on the two thousand twenty-two budget, starting from a timeline in April, and we're going to start on the two thousand twenty-three budget on April the nineteenth of this year. So the budget is a long process. We also worked with the township administration, as well as public financial management, on the refunding of the two thousand seventeen general obligation bonds, and this was a very positive activity, resulting in the savings of one-point-two million dollars over the remaining life of the bond. We supported the Pension Advisory Committee with their funding plan and initiated discussion of funding on something we're calling the Accelerated Road Maintenance Plan. That came up at a Ways and Means Committee meeting in October of two thousand twenty-one, suggested by Bob Salnick. We have continued support and review of our proposed community recreation center. That's been an ongoing project for, I'm sure, at least five years. And as I've really mentioned, the two committees or partnerships that we had during two thousand twenty-one were the Pension Advisory Committee, as well as a Park and Recreation Board. What are we going to do and how are we going to serve the community in two thousand twenty-two? We're going to continue working with the administration and the Board of Supervisors on accelerated roads maintenance program and the related funding, continued support for the PAC. And then also, we want to look at some studies for funding alternatives such as grants and/or fundraising, particularly for the proposed community center. Continued participation in the planning and financing of the community center, as just mentioned, and of course, the review of the twenty-three budget, capital projects, and five-year plan, once again, starting in April of the current year. If you would like to join us at the Ways and Means Committee meetings, they are held monthly, the fourth Wednesday of the month. So we're always very honored to welcome members of the public, if you would be so inclined. And our last slide shows the members of the other committee, the other committee members that I would like to recognize for their volunteer efforts for two thousand twenty-two. In addition, I'd like to thank Township Administration and the Board of Supervisors for working with us as we look forward to the financial success of the township. Thank you.
Okay, that's our reports for tonight. Any public comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing no one raising their hand or stepping forward. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December twentieth, at seven PM. We're going to be closed Thursday and Friday, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of November for Thanksgiving, and we're going to be closed December twenty-sixth for Christmas. Boards and commission video presentations, like the three you just saw, can be viewed on YouTube channel, going to doilystownpa.org. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Saturday of each month from nine AM to eleven PM, and the first and fourth Tuesdays of the month from nine AM to two PM. Drop-off site is the New Britain Entrance to Central Park. Doylestown Parks and Recreation have a few upcoming events. They sound like a lot of fun. December second, Jolly Jammy Jam with Mrs. Claus. I know, Eric, you really are so excited about that one. From six to eight PM in the community meetings room here, that's this room. December tenth, December Fest. It starts with a frosty five-k run from nine AM to ten AM in Central Park, and then it concludes one to four PM with a visit with Santa at Central Park Pavilion, number one. And the American Red Cross Blood Drive is December ninth, from two to seven, and you can register at redcrossblood.org and use the sponsor code DOILSTOWNTOUCHIP. Next item on the agenda is approval of the Budget Work Session Minutes from October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them?
Yes.
Yes, is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of the Budget Session Notes from October eighteenth?
Aye.
Aye.
Five and oh. And then next is the meeting minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, October eighteenth. Everyone had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda, correspondences. We have a volunteer resignation from Bob Salnick, now that he got our roads program underway. He's leaving the Ways and Means Committee, and we will accept his letter of resignation and thank him for his service. Next item on the agenda is a correspondence from the Village Improvement Association, VIA. They want to bring back the Village Fair. If you recall, back in the early nineties, there was a big fair at War Memorial Field, and that was their fundraising event. This year, and with, they want to do this in June of two thousand twenty-three, and they want it to be in Central Park. So we had a meeting with them, and we think it's a good idea. The VIA has always been a supporter of Doylestown Township in our park system, and we think this is a good opportunity for them to reinvent their mission and expose themselves to the community. So we're looking to support this event and just like a consensus from the board on that.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Reports from the solicitor?
I have nothing to report.
Township engineer?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Chief?
Nothing.
Director of Operations, there's always something from you.
I'll have Mr. Torpe address the change order for the road program.
Yes, so we'd like to make a motion to approve a change order in the amount of forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-eighty dollars and forty-five cents. While we were doing the road program, there were a couple sections in the township that needed some additional repair that was, that exceeded what the typical maintenance that we thought. So we worked through it with them, got it actually done and completed. Value well spent. Everybody was, you know, that was involved, happy with the results. So the motion would be to approve that additional cost of forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-eighty dollars and forty-five cents, bringing the total contract price to two million four-hundred-ninety-two-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be Nancy and Ryan. Next item on the agenda is, oh, township manager.
I just wanted, we just got word that the five-k race for December Fest may have been postponed or canceled for this year, but we're hoping they can bring that back next year. And then the other item I have is the vehicle auction. We have the two thousand fifteen Ford Interceptor that we want to send to auction, has over a hundred and ten thousand miles on it. There's an auction in December through J.J. Kane Auctioneers. I'm looking for the board's approval to send it to auction.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, supervisors, Nancy, you have anything tonight?
Sure. One, I wanted to thank Ryan Mannion, as well as the Veterans Advisory Committee for a really wonderful Veterans Day ceremony. It was the inaugural. Really appreciate the voices of all the speakers, as well as the children that sang from Mount Carmel. It was really fantastic. Also want to thank Stacy for redoing the website. It really looks fantastic. Still would like, two things I do have questions on, just is a better clarification on the gym floor for the rec center. I know Karen had sent some information back, but I still want to make sure, based on the feasibility study, that it, you know, the athletic organizations, as part of the fundraising, will be able to meet those needs and goals. And so I'd like a little more clarification on that at some point. And then the final thing is, I saw we got, now have one and a half million dollars in grants, which is great. I just had a question why we're going to do a resolution rather than waiting until the total bid comes in in January. So I was just trying to get clarification on that.
Stephanie has an answer to that question, the last one.
Right, as part of the RACP grant process, there is a business application and plan that we are required to put together, and the folks at the Budget Office require that a resolution be put into place so that, as part of the process, so that they can assign a consultant to us as the rest of the project moves forward. So that's a requirement.
No.
Just to clarify, Nancy, you said eleven-point-five, it's one-point-five, correct?
I'm sorry, one-point-five, excuse me.
Yeah, okay.
No, that would have been fantastic. We wouldn't have this conversation.
You can dream.
All right, anything from you, Jen?
Nothing from me.
Dan?
Yeah, from my role as the liaison for the Water and Sewer Board, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Matt Oaks as our newest member for the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board.
I'll second.
All right, we met Matt earlier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the only thing, it's just echoing Nancy's sentiments about the Veterans Day event. Thank you for everyone who put in the hard work, and Commissioner Harvey for coming out speaking, and Ryan for saying the words you did and all the veterans that spoke. So thank you.
I feel like I wasn't there.
So I'm sorry, Barb.
And Barb, Barb, your remarks were amazing. Thank you, Barb.
I said everyone, because I knew I was going to forget someone.
Never mind, never mind, Dan, never mind. Ryan?
Yes, I'd like to make two nominations for some open boards. For our Veterans Advisory Committee, I'd like to nominate Megan McCune. I'd like to make a motion for Megan McCune to join the board.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then for our Park and Rec Board, I'd also like to nominate Joe Salvati. Make a motion for that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Ryan?
You did a beautiful job at the Veterans event.
I mean, anything else?
No, that's it from me.
Okay, I'm going to, I have comments about the creation of the Capital Campaign Committee, but I'll talk about later. So let's move on to the, any unfinished business? No? All right. New business, the land development application, Doylestown Country Club Land Development Preliminary and Final. Just giving everybody a heads up, I am not voting on this, and I'd rather not speak to it either, as I have recused on this project many times, and since my son is standing at the podium and I'm a member of the country club, I'm recused.
Sounds like a pretty good idea.
Yeah, you think so.
Thank you. My name is Dan Lyons. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Doylestown Country Club. Also here with me this evening is Dan Humes from Van Cleef Engineering, and Eric Hogan, who is the general manager for the Doylestown Country Club. As a brief summary of the project, Doylestown Country Club proposes to reconfigure the existing parking lot and construct in addition and related renovations to the existing clubhouse. The reconfiguration will improve the functionality, efficiency, safety, and internal traffic flow while adding fifty-nine new parking spaces. The proposed renovations will increase the building coverage by just under five thousand square feet and will allow DCC to upgrade its amenities for its members and its guests. The project did require zoning relief, mostly related to the expansion of the, I'm sorry, the reconfiguration of the parking lot with respect to existing non-conforming conditions. There were also a few of, I call them technical variances with respect to the items shown on the plan. We were before the zoning hearing board on August fifteenth, where we did receive verbal approval at that time, which was memorialized in a written decision of the zoning hearing board dated September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We then had a very productive meeting with the Planning Commission on this application for preliminary and final land development approval, and that was held on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and the Planning Commission did unanimously vote to recommend preliminary and final approval of the land development application before you this evening. We are in receipt of a number of review letters from the township staff and professionals, and have submitted a list of waiver requests from the SALDO. And I can represent to you that each of the waivers, I'm sorry, each of the comments in those review letters are, will comply, with the exception of the waivers. And with that, we're happy to address any comments the board may have in those review letters or the waiver requests that were submitted, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Oh, I guess I shouldn't have asked that.
I do not have any questions.
I do not. Frank, you do your thing.
Okay, I'm told by Mr. Garten that he shared with you a proposed memorandum regarding this application.
Yes.
You've had an opportunity to review that?
Yes.
And you're agreeable to the conditions set forth in that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm told by Mr. Garten that he reads a script, that Doylestown Country Club has submitted an application for land development approval seeking to reconfigure the existing parking area, construct approximately five-hundred, five-thousand-square-foot addition, and making additional improvements, including stormwater facilities. The plans before the board were prepared by Van Cleef Engineering LLC dated August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and last revised August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. The Doylestown Planning Commission at its meeting held on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, recommended approval of the plan subject to conditions. If the Board of Supervisors are inclined to approve the preliminary final plan development for the project, the following conditions would be applicable. Compliance with and/or satisfactory resolution of the comments in Gilmore and Associates' Planning Review Letter of September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Compliance with the zoning hearing board decision dated September twenty-first, two thousand nine, and September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, including any conditions noted therein. Compliance with their satisfactory resolution of the comments in Pinoni Engineering Review Correspondence dated September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Execution of a mutually satisfactory trail easement, which shall be a condition of recording any plans or proceeding with the project. And as part of this approval process, the Board of Supervisors were requested in our granting waivers. I'm not going to read all them. I'm told they're in the review letters, which you've had an opportunity to review, unless you instruct me otherwise. I'm also told that as part of the approval process, the Board of Supervisors are granting waivers to provisions from the Stormwater Management Ordinance, which were set forth in the information previously supplied to you. There will also be compliance with Michael Baker International Review Letter dated September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Compliance with the Township Code Enforcement Review dated June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Compliance with the Bucks Planning Commission Letter dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand Compliance with the Traffic Review Letter dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And the applicant shall comply with the Arborist's recommendation regarding the fifty-one-inch-caliber sycamore tree, with the understanding that work to be done in the vicinity of the sycamore shall be coordinated with the Township Planner in consultation with the Township Arborist. The applicant will get all permits and approvals from agencies having jurisdiction over the matters, including but not limited to the Bucks County Conservation District, Penn. DEP, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, and Doylestown Township Fire Marshal. The project shall be ADA compliant in funding and execution of development and financial security agreements in a form satisfactory to the township's solicitor and township manager. Do you agree to all those conditions?
Yes.
So I guess we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four and one abstention. Okay, you're good to go.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Nice job. It was a good job. Okay, my agenda. All right. I lost my agenda. Next item on the agenda is. I lost my agenda. Barn Plaza. Planning module, thank you. It's here somewhere. The Langdon Planning Module for Barn Plaza Shopping Center.
The board will recall that you waived the land development process, however, they still need to amend the application and mailing for the sewage facilities.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the planning module?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and next is the Tyke Property has a sewage facility planning module application.
Correct, and that is waiver for the property as well to connect from an on-lot system to an existing sewer line that is on their property.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that connection?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five and oh. Similarly with the Snyder Property.
That is correct. They two have the, their properties are joined with the other one, and they two have a sewer line running through their property and are looking to connect to it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is the creation, no, the redevelopment assistance capital program.
No, we have the revised, sorry, the revised agenda. No, we have the revised, sorry, the revised agenda for the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge.
I missed one.
Payment 39, that was the revised agenda from late yesterday.
Oh, I don't have that. It's okay, go ahead, just bring it up.
Yep, so the, excuse me, the committee reviewed the...
Throw it on the floor.
...application for payment number 39 for the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Project in the amount of $586,263.82. We would recommend the requirement, the approval for payment number 39.
Okay, is there a motion to approve payment number 39?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sorry about that, guys. Okay, now the redevelopment assistance capital program requiring a resolution.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Anybody have any questions about this?
Right.
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we want to raise $3 million for this building, the recreation center. Luckily, we've already got a million and a half, so we need to create a capital fundraising committee. It'll be short-term for this purpose only, and I recommend or propose that there be a nine-member committee, three residents, the rest can be from Central Bucks, and one liaison and one chair of the committee. I'd rather have somebody else be chair, I'd rather have a non-supervisor be chair, but for the time being, I'm going to serve in that capacity until somebody else takes it over, and I would like one other member of the supervisors to be on this committee.
I can, I can join you on that, Barbara.
You will?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I'll find time.
Okay, great, thanks.
I like it. Way to go, Dan.
And then from everybody else, I'm going to need...
I think we all have to commit to play an active role in it regardless.
Yes, I agree. I need, I need everyone to contribute, commit to finding people who will want to, you know, invest in this building, all right? Everybody.
Yep.
Everybody, everybody in the room, okay. So with that recommendation, I guess we need a motion to create the committee. Is everybody okay with nine members? I took an odd number.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And three of whom have to be township residents, I think.
That's fair.
Is everybody good with that?
Yep.
And, and we can expand to advisory members or members who, in the community, who are lending their names, not necessarily part of the community, committee. You understand how that might work? I'll keep you posted. Okay, so I'm going to put that in form of a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, now calling question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Also, as part of this capital campaign, I'm hoping that the board will approve hiring a part-time person, salary negotiable, probably 30 hours a week, 20, 30 hours a week. I think, you know, based on the requirements of this person, it's a, it should be a fairly well-paid position, $25 to $30 an hour, and of course, this is short-term commitment as well, posting. So we gave you an outline of what the job description looks like. It's pretty meaty, like four pages. So I think a salary negotiated application, but that's what I'm thinking in terms of how much it's going to cost us per hour.
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes. Do we need a motion on that?
I think so.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you're good to go to advertise that. Anything else I need to do, Karen? That's it? That's it? Do I need to do anything else? Okay. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, and that's the big thing today, budget presentation for the 2023 preliminary budget. We all have it. The paper copy looks like this, in case you guys are all looking at mine. Stephanie wants to make a few introductory remarks, and then we'll vote on it.
Yep. Correct. I think we'll start, which Ms. Brave announced during her video presentation to the board, is our, you know, planning process, and as you see here, it's quite intense, it's quite lengthy. We started this past April, and we agreed that Pencils Down would be at that October 18th meeting. So, you know, there's been a lot of participation from our staff, department heads, our volunteer Ways and Means Committee, and this Board of Supervisors to bring forth a budget, and the major highlights, I think, of the 2023 budget, you can see on the screen, and that is that this is a balanced operations of 13.7 million in revenues and 13.7 million in expenses. The good news is, is that there is no tax increase for '23. We have growth in capital spending for the community recreation center. We are going to continue the accelerated road program, and we have a Safe Roots to School grant that's 2.4 million, that we will be doing the trails along, the bike hike trail along Shady Retreat Road and Burpee. So the results, I believe, are a strong revenues and the necessary resources that we need to continue to provide the residents with the appropriate services. And the board has the entire budget. It will hang once approved for the next 20 days, and final adoption would be at your December meeting. If there's anything else the board would like to review, Ken Wallace, our finance director, is here, and he and I would be happy to address anything, but that pretty much sums everything up at this point.
I would just say thank you to the staff and the Ways and Means Committee. I feel like this process gets, I don't want to say easier is probably not the right word, but it gets more streamlined, it gets, it's, it's just, it's very well done, so, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I agree. All right, any more, any discussion, any questions? Let's move on to approval of the preliminary budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary budget.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of the question, of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, you're good to go. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
All right, before we go on to treasures, one more thing I need for this capital campaign thing is the naming policy up to date, our naming policy.
Karen, Karen's been working on that, and...
So, yeah.
As part of our process, we can certainly...
For the next meeting, you know, circulate it. Okay, so we all know what we're doing. Okay, thank you, sorry about that. All right, next item on the agenda, Treasures Report for November 15th, 2022, not 0222, but...
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jen, last is the bills list for November 15th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's everybody. Next meeting, oh, this board is Tuesday, December 20th at 7:00 PM. We're going to be closed Thursday and Friday, the 24th and 25th of November for Thanksgiving and December 26th for Christmas. The Board and Commission videos can be viewed on the YouTube, YouTube channel, doylstownpa.org. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Saturday of each month from 9:00 AM to 11:00, and the first and fourth Tuesday of each month, 9:00 AM to 2:00. Drop-off site is the New Britain Entrance to Central Park. The Township Parks and Rec Program, Board has the following events coming up. December 2nd, Jolly Jammy Jam with Mrs. Claus, 6 to 8 in this room. December 10th, December Fest, maybe the Frosty 5K run is, is going to be postponed, but take a look before you come out in your, your running shoes. It's 9 to, 9 to 10 if it's happening, but definitely December 10th, December Fest, Visit with Santa is on, 1 to 4 in the afternoon at Central Park Pavilion. And the American Red Cross Blood Drive is December 9th, 2 to 7, and you register at redcrossblood.org and use Doylestown Township as the code. Any other business? Any public comment, not, you know, just regular public comment from anybody? Yes, sir, take the podium and identify yourself, please.
Peter Cox, I'm a resident from Temple Hill. And I wanted to, it's very rare that people step up forward. I want to say thank you to the engineers and the road paving contractor. They put their signs up, said that we had to be careful where we parked for a period of 10 days. That was six days longer than necessary. They were in in two days, got everything cleared out in the next two days. My entire neighborhood, from Spring Valley to Cherry Lane and from Swamp over to Pebble Hill, was completely repaved. They did a phenomenal job, very professional. They left the neighborhood clean. There was no refuse or even evidence that they had been there when they left. So please pass on to the contractor, job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You know what? East Road was paved in a day and a half, and was marked on the third day. It was amazing, so I have to tell them how wonderful it was. I wasn't even expecting it. Okay, we're adjourned, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. But there are documents to be signed.
Documents to be signed. Because I would not, if I could say that right. Thank you. It just gets ugly, but not, not... Yeah, we're, we're pretty, pretty good. They're always prepared.
You're very good. This is the most efficient meeting I've ever been at. I'd be good at a lot of them, whatever needs to be signed.
We just got a compliment. This is the most efficient meeting he's ever had.